Would all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get underway, there are a few preliminary matters that I'd like to address. First off, in the event of a fire, please move in a calm and orderly direction to the door to your left. Do not use the elevators, use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. And if there is a fire, there will be an announcement. Don't panic, just leave orderly. Meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record and for producing minutes of the meeting. So when you come to the podium, please identify yourself each time with your name and your address. Speak clearly into the microphone so that everybody can hear you. She is not making verbatim minutes, but just minutes. We will take up the cases in the order that they appear on our agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table next to the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative should come to the podium, identify themselves, state their name, their address, raise their right hand. They'll be sworn in, then they'll have the opportunity to present their case. During the presentation of their case, members of the board can ask questions or get engaged in discussion with the applicant concerning matters that are of interest to the board. Once that process is concluded, we'll open the hearing to public input. There are three categories right now of public input that we have. The first category is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. We'll ask those people in favor of the application to speak first. Then those who wish to speak in opposition to the application will speak next. Then those who would like to talk to us about the application but don't know whether they're in favor of it or opposed to it, but just want to talk to about it, we'll give them an opportunity to talk about it. Once all the public input has been completed, the applicant will then be given an opportunity to address any questions or comments that arose during the public input portion of the hearing. Once that process is completed, we'll then close the hearing with respect to that case, move on to the next case on the agenda. Once all the cases have been heard, we will take a short recess, and then we will resume after the recess and deliberate on the cases in the order of the applicants who are still present. So if the applicant whose case appears on the agenda first has left, we'll take up the second case if that applicant is still here. We'll take the cases in the order that they appear on the agenda and for whom applicants are still present. Then we'll go back to the top of the agenda and take the cases for the applicants who have left. There's no further public input that's allowed during the deliberation process, but you're all welcome to stay and listen to the deliberation. If you leave and you wish to know what the decision was on a particular case and you don't have the opportunity to watch it on TV before we finish the evening, you can call the planning and zoning department at Town Hall tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m. and they'll be glad to tell you what decisions we came to during the deliberation portion of our meeting. Before we get underway with the items on the agenda, I would like to just note that Mr. Evans is going to be employed out of the country for a period of time, so he will not be with us for the next several months. I understand that there may be somebody who's going to be substituting for Mr. Evans, but we want to wish him a safe journey and we'll look forward to having you return to us in a few months.
Yeah, the Town Board appointed an alternate member which will fill in for Mr. Evans in his absence, Brad Huber, and he will join you at the next meeting.
Perfect. So with the preliminary matters out of the way, we can call the first case on the agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1506-1. Upon the matter of request by Thomas Harkin for an area variance to construct a parking area with gravel-refined road millings, Section 235.77.D. of Town Code, on premises 135 Pleasant Road in a C business district.
Good evening, Thomas Harkin. I live on Bayside Drive 170 in town of Verona Quay. I propose to-
If you could raise your right hand.
No, I did not.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I propose to put a top coat of gravel on my parking lot. This parking lot had been gravelled for many, probably decades, I'm sure. It was the parking lot for a post office, a bar, a meat market, I believe, an apartment complex. Over the years, it's been neglected, grass has grown through the gravel that was already there, and I just want to make it gravel again. Not the entire parking lot, but I believe you have a diagram with the measurements, and that's the area I'd like to gravel. Leave the rest the way it is, grass, I'll mow it, keep it look good. I want to make sure it just, it looks good.
Actually, my question is over here.
No, thanks.
When we approve the original variance on this property to be used for parking vehicles that you use in your business-
Yes.
And that's fine, I've been, I go by there all the time, and I see nothing that looks terrible, or big, or wrong, but I was noticing the other day that the parking lot seems to be turning green. Quite honestly, it looked nice.
No, thanks.
But it's not gravel, it's green. Well, whatever's growing there, probably most of it's weeds anyway.
A lot of it's grass, but there is some weeds, yes.
So you like to kind of uniform that whole outlined area with that, it's more of a gray color?
Yes.
Gravel. Is that the same kind of material they use on playgrounds and that type of thing, or is it just?
I'm not familiar with what they use on playgrounds, but what I'm proposing is it's refined road millings. It's when they resurface road and they mill the road, they chop it up into like a lot of small pieces and using that.
You know, it's new to me, I never heard of that before. What a great idea to use that old road stuff.
Yeah.
That kind of thing. Is it pretty, pretty fine, or is it kind of?
It's, there's just like chunks like this big.
Okay. Not going to hurt the kids at all?
No, no, no.
Well.
But if you put it under a swing set or something, it wouldn't be nicer for that.
Just out of curiosity, do you have to dig it down and, or do you just put it on top of the existing?
I believe I can just put it on top. I would like to, I'll tamp it down, but I think that's all I really need to do. But if that didn't work, then I'd have to dig up, you know, a little bit. Just scrape it and then top coat it.
And how thick do you put it on? And again, just out of curiosity.
What I'm thinking is like two inches on top of what's there. Not really thick. But again, you have to see it as I go along, but-
Now will that set up hard like a regular road car will?
Yeah, well, almost.
With the sunshine and?
Yeah, with sunshine and actually driving on it, driving on it, compacting it down, it's going to harden it up.
Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter, move on to the next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1506-2. Upon the matter of request by Carmen Santora for area variances to construct a garage addition with less than required side setback and exceeding maximum allowable garage width on premises 235 Willow Creek Lane in an R1 residential district.
Carmen Santora, 235 Willow Creek Lane.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I certainly do.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Inzoning Board members, I actually am here tonight. I'd like to extend my existing garage. The one I have right now is 24 wide by 21 deep, and I'd like to put on a garage addition attached to it, 10 foot by 20 foot to the side of it, making it actually a three-car garage altogether. My present side setback is 15 feet, where the required setback is nine feet or 10% of the width in my particular area. So I am requesting an approval of a four-foot area variance, leaving five feet as my future side setback. My immediate neighbor that affects the most to my right, when he built his house, he originally built it 20 feet to my left, leaving actually 20 feet more than the required 10%. So between his 20 feet that he has now and my 15 feet, we have 35 feet in between. The average in that neighborhood is eight foot on each side because the average lots are actually 80 foot wide, which I built about 12 of the houses on that particular track. So the side setbacks are usually about eight foot on both sides. So we technically, instead of having 16 feet, actually have 35 feet. So what I was trying to do is put on a 10-foot width garage. And one of the other variances I need is because the code says that you can't have more than a 30-foot wide existing garage, or more than a 30-foot wide frontage. With my existing 24-foot wide and the 10-foot I'm proposing, it'll become 34-foot wide, so I'm asking for another variance to have four more feet added to that part. I don't believe that granting of the variance will result in any undesirable change to the neighborhood, nor will it be detrimental to the nearby properties. In fact, there's two similar three-car garages existing on the street. There is no alternative solution to my situation other than storing it off-site, which is kind of expensive and very inconvenient. The requesting variance is not really substantial considering that both myself and my neighbor will have still a considerable amount of footage left after this would be put on. And the granting of the variance will not have any adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood and will not block any views, cause drainage problem, or impact any other wetlands, or cause parking problems. Although the situation is self-created because of the purchase of an additional vehicle, I think it would be an asset to the neighborhood as it would allow me to park more cars on my property rather than off-street during the snowing season. In addition, I believe a three-car garage really adds to the aesthetics of a home. You'll find nine signatures, including my neighbor to my immediate right that affects it, and as far as having no adverse anything on it.
I got a question for you, Mr. Santo. Do you have space between you and your neighbor mainly because your neighbor's way over?
Right.
That makes up most of the space. My question is, when I saw it the other day, I don't remember. When I looked at your neigh, I was looking at yours, not the neighbor's house. What is that neighbor part of the house there? Is it part of the main house, or is that his garage that you're showing on this map?
My neighbor's house?
Yeah.
My neighbor's garage is on the opposite side of the house.
Okay, so this is actually what we're looking at, is the main part of the house.
Of, that affects him, right?
Yeah. I guess-
All the garages are to the right of all the houses on that street.
Uniform, yeah. Do you think, and this is conjecture, and maybe it's not a fair question, but do you think that if that neighbor wanted to add on to his house, he might be restricted because it would be too close to yours? Do you think it'd have an impact like that, or not?
Well, I don't believe so because the code requires a 10%, which he's got 20. If he did anything more than nine feet, you know, he'd still have 11 feet left to do something. If he didn't, or wanted more, he'd have to come here also. But I don't think he has any intentions, at least he's been there for 20 years. And there's only, you know, two people there, so I don't think he needs, would do it anyway, but you never know.
Yeah. I didn't want him to come out and say, "Oh, I can't do it because this guy built his garage too close and all that." But he wouldn't have a case, would he? Because he still has plenty of room.
Yes, he does. And I made sure, I actually, I did want to go wider, but I wanted to make sure I kept the five feet sort of minimum that I think is required also to make it a little easier. I don't, I just, the existing garage, I don't intend on taking the whole entire wall down. It's only going to be maybe a 10-foot opening just to get in and out of the other side. It's more or less to store a vintage sports car.
And he is the number one signer on the approval list, right?
Yeah, I went to him first.
Right, right, so he is in favor of it, so?
Yeah, it's, well, I mean, we've been friends for 20 years, so.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll open it to public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to come up and talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next matter on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1506-3. Upon the matter of request by Matthew Simmons for an area variance to install a three-and-a-half-foot-high white picket vinyl front yard fencing exceeding maximum allowable linear footage on premises 162 Tamarack Drive in an R2 residential district.
Caught me off guard. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, can you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Matthew Simmons. My address is 162 Tamarack Drive in Verona Quay. All I'm asking for, I just need the linear footage. That being, I know you guys all went out to the property. In that area where I want to put the fence is considered my front yard, so the linear footage is only allowable by 32 feet. I'm asking for 144 feet, just because that's the only access to my house on that end, besides going through the garage or right over by that end of the house. I'm not going over any other variances. I'm keeping it at the three-and-a-half foot. I'm keeping it white picket fence. I just need the length. I'm going to keep it three feet away from the property line on the front off of Tamarack Drive. I'm going to keep it three feet away from the fire hydrant that's in my yard. And I'm not going over any other variances.
Questions or comments from members of the board? I just noticed there's one, two, three people in favor of it? Correct. Neighbors, right?
Yes, I went around and I asked the neighbors. I let them all read the letter of intent that I had written up for you, gentlemen and ladies. They took a look at the pictures that I have on there as well. I know a bunch of you have probably noticed that some of the bushes have been taken out. Well, actually, all the bushes have been taken out. That was, I started taking out a couple of them just to, you know, give it some room and open it up. And actually, I found out while doing that, a lot of the neighbors, it was blocking their view when coming down Duran, going down Tamarack, as well as a lot of neighbors drove by, our neighbor to the back of us. It was actually, the bushes were scratching their cars. So they were all in favor of me taking out the bushes as well. And they all signed that to let you guys know.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application, step right up, sir. Oh, you don't need to be sworn, just the applicant.
Okay, Keith Collins of 176 Tamarack, driving around Quay, directly across the street from Mr. Simmons's house. And I think what he's looking to do is actually going to make that part of the neighborhood look a lot nicer. It's not like we're going with any big chain link fence. It's going to, it's, with the new property that's there, especially, it's a big positive change for this area after having to look at the burned-out thing that sat there for over a year. And, you know, it's nice to see somebody coming in and making physical improvements, especially with this being effectively the side of his house, but the way the property's zoned, it's the front yard. I've seen his project plans, and I think it's going to be a nice addition to the neighborhood, especially something that I'm going to have to see out my front window every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to come and talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1506-4. Upon the matter of request of Michael and McLean Lazak for area variances to construct an addition in front porch with less than required front setbacks and in addition with less than required rear setbacks on premises 574 Pine Grove Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Michael Lazak, 547 Pine Grove Avenue.
If you could raise your, yep. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. What I'm seeking to do is get reapproval for a variance that was approved in 2012. 547 is a very irregular lot situated on a private road which backs to Duran Park. We're looking to resolve functional obsolescence inside the home and creates a sheltered entrance, and in the process of doing that, resolve aging exterior of the property. The rear setback existing is 16 feet to Duran Park. What we're proposing is a bump out under the existing roof line, which would maintain that 16-foot setback. Additionally, on the front south side of the property, we're looking to put an eight-foot addition, which would result in a nine-foot setback, approximately 16 feet from the shared road. This is consistent with other homes on the subdivision, and I believe consistent with the neighborhood.
Now, you've had reference, and I recall this was in front of us, you said 2012, right?
Correct.
Is this any different than what you proposed that we approved then?
It's a carbon copy, essentially.
Might you have a copy, because we don't? No, I don't have a copy, but we did approve this, right?
Yes, it was approved back in July 2nd of 2012 to construct a porch, an addition in porch with less than required front setbacks and to construct an addition with less than required rear setbacks.
Might you have a copy of that here?
I have the decision letter.
Well, okay, whatever you have.
Do you have a copy of the actual letter today?
And so you're here because you weren't able to start that within the year?
Correct.
And now whatever obstacles there were then to starting it have been resolved?
To my knowledge, yes.
As far as you know?
Yeah.
All right, and now you're ready to start?
Correct.
Okay. And you said it's a carbon copy, so there's nothing different about it now than what we approved three years ago?
Correct, nothing's changed.
All right. What?
The variance is only, once it's granted, it's only valid for a year.
If they don't start it, then it lapses, and then they have to reapply. So he's here to reapply because he's ready to start now? Yeah, okay, all right. Any other questions or comments from the board? What was the reasoning? Was there a particular reason it's taken so long, or?
Well, initially, it was finances, and then it was getting a contractor to come down there and want to work in that space. The second issue is still an issue, the first one's not, so.
Okay. Now that the first one's resolved, the second one might resolve either.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone like to talk to us about it? All right, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1506-5. Upon the matter of request by Mike Cotsworth for area variances to construct a new front porch with less than required front and side setbacks on premises 127 Wimbledon Road in an R1 residential district.
Adam Cornelius, 544 Longacre Road.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I am the contractor for Mr. and Mrs. Cotsworth. They couldn't make it this evening due to Karen's illness, and they would like to have a variance because they're going to exceed the setback on both the front of the house and the northwest end of the house. I think it's about a five-foot setback once we're finished, and then the new setback in the front will be 24 feet. I have one letter that was dropped off to me by one of the neighbors. I wasn't sure what I was supposed to do with that, if I could hand it to somebody.
Hand it to Mr. Evans, we'll pass it around, and eventually I'll read it into the record, or at least make a note of it into the record. And so the porch is just intended to provide a place for the homeowners to sit?
Correct, to enjoy the neighborhood and to make it a little easier to come in and out of their home. Right now, they just have like a poured concrete slab that comes out with no railing systems either way, and they'd like to kind of make it a little safer for their grandchildren and whatnot, so it's going to be a traditional porch.
It's going to be enclosed?
No, sir, just railings.
It's just going to be an open, but we'll have rails?
It'll have railings, yes, sir.
Okay.
With a roof.
With a roof, well, with a roof, yeah.
It's going to run the whole length of the front of the house?
Yes, sir.
Is the, is the letter that you have from the next door, the immediate next-door neighbor that it might affect, or?
It's to the east, which at least doesn't affect the setback, it's the other neighbor. But because of the situation this evening, I wasn't able to receive his letter. He was going to try to make a phone call, I'm not sure if that happened or not, but he is in favor of it as well.
The neighbor to the west?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And as the letter indicates, it's from the neighbor at 133 Wimbledon Road, and it indicates that they're considering, have considered a similar request for themselves, and?
I believe there might be two front porches on that street that have been constructed in the last 10 years.
It's ironic that it comes up tonight because just a few hours ago, I saw a psychologist who gave a presentation several years ago after the Columbine incident that talked about the societal changes that came from switching from a front porch community to a rear deck community, and that the front porch communities tended to be much more friendly, much more aware of what was going on in the neighborhood, much more protective, and much more concerned with the neighbors. And that's exactly what the letter from the neighbor is pointing to.
Interesting.
It was. And I told him that I quote him regularly at these meetings when these things come up, so. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Does anyone like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to our next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1506-6. Upon the matter of request by Robert and Judith Frisch for area variances to construct a new front porch with less than required- a new front porch with less than required front and side setbacks on premises 130 Beacon View Court in an R1 residential district.
Hello, I'm Stephen Corrini. My office address is 1387 Fairport Road. Our residence is 5 Wisteria Lane in around Acquah.
Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here tonight representing Robert and Judy Frisch. They're the homeowners, they bought this residence, moved in in 1968. They keep a beautiful home, they've had it remodeled several years ago. I have a few pictures with me that just show the very neat vinyl siding and shutters and beautiful trim around the door and well-maintained house and lot. It's a Cape Cod house with, again, similar to a previous applicant, very little protection from the weather at the front door. This past winter, they had hard times getting through the snow and ice that would form on the small concrete stoop at that front door and they're looking for a way to have better protection from the weather. So the idea is to put a five-foot porch across the front of the house. The house as built apparently is just a little bit too close on the east side. Survey map says 7.5 feet and I believe probably eight feet is required and that's why the side setback kicked in. That did not come up at the counter upstairs, but I saw it noted on our agenda tonight. So I assumed Donna caught that at some point and typed it in. So we do need the side setback because we are gonna line up with that side of the house. So we'll need just a fraction of a foot to build that close to the side lot line. And then coming forward five feet, we'll be encroaching on the front setback as well. Because the front lot line of the house is not square and at 90 degrees to the side lot lines, the, as you move from east to west across the front of the house, you do actually get further from the street. So as you, as we move across, the setback does grow, so the maximum variance sort of gets, gets less and less as you go across the property. You have submitted with our application what we propose, having this porch look like, columns, a roof that slopes up and meets the steeper sloping roof of the Cape Cod house, materials that coordinate well or match existing materials, white trim, gray colors, just, matching or coordinating well with the colors and materials that are already there. A few steps down to a new sidewalk that will go across the front and meet up with the driveway. The Frishes, Robert and Judy, are here with me tonight. If any questions come up that they're better suited to answer, they can come to the podium. But otherwise, that, that is our presentation.
Any questions or comments from the board?
At this point, there's no plan to enclose the porch, right? It's just over the, overhead.
Right, we're gonna have the columns, the roof, a wood floor with a, with a lattice or decorative material from the floor down to the ground and a railing. But no, no, no windows, no screens, just an open air porch.
What arrangements could be made with the weatherman to make all the storms come out of the south?
Well, we're, we're looking into it. I mean, certainly at some point, you gotta step off your porch and then it's snowing and, you know, or five minutes later, the sun is shining. But the stair, we actually have two stairs exiting that porch. The one that would be centered on the house that maybe is gonna be a little bit more for looks and another one all the way to the west against the driveway, that probably will be the, just a couple of stairs that get the most use because Mrs. Frisch will be right by the passenger side of the car at that point.
I'm just being a little facetious about that. Obviously, we can't control the weather, but...
We can move south, Mr. Thomas, right?
That's right. I have a front porch, you wanna buy it? No, just kidding. I think the idea of a front porch is excellent and we've had three or four porches this month and I think that's a very good sign. Like Mr. Hemmings was saying, it's, it kind of changes the character of the neighborhood to the positive. I was looking down the street today and I'm noticing other houses of similar construction, some of which, I'm not sure if anybody has a porch just like that, but they could.
Mm-hmm.
And I wouldn't be surprised if we see others come along in the future.
Yeah, there are many houses very similar to this on that road and there's a lot of front doors with no real roof overhead.
I definitely are, personally, very much in favor of this and I certainly hope to get the benefit from the weather that they're seeking to get. So, good job.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and I believe that concludes our agenda for this evening. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, and we will be in recess until 7:45.[1011.63] The order that they appear on the agenda, because nobody left and everybody is still present. So with respect to the first application, with respect to 135 Point Pleasant Road, for secret purposes, we need to determine whether or not there is any significant environmental impact. I have been provided with a short environmental assessment form, Part III, Determination of Significance. All of the questions on the back are checked "no" or "small impact may occur," that it will not create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation, it will not result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of the land, it will not impair the character or quality of the existing community, it will not have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area, which I don't think it's within, it will not result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway, it will not cause an increase in the use of energy, and it does not fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities, it will not impact existing public-private water supplies or public-private wastewater treatment utilities, it will not impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources, it will not result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna, it will not result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or draining problems, and it will not create a hazard to environmental resources or human health. I would propose that we adopt those findings and would make a motion that we determine that this application does not present any significant environmental impact.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Seven votes in favor and no opposed. Does someone wish to make a motion with respect to the application itself? Doing so well there. All right. I would propose that we grant the application as submitted with respect to possible change to the character of the neighborhood. It's not going to effectuate any change at all. The lot has been in the current state for at least two or three years. The alternatives that would not require variance would actually require that it be blacktopped, and I believe that the use of the millwork will, not millwork, it's...
Millings.
Millings would, in fact, enhance the environment because it's reusing something that otherwise might sit in the landfill somewhere. And it would also eventually, I believe, it facilitates drainage. It's not a substantial request. It would not have any adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions if it's granted, and it's not a self-created hardship because it's just an effective way to use it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no abstentions, no, none opposed, and there are no members of the board absent tonight. Next application is with respect to 235 Willow Creek Lane. This is a Type II action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application as presented. I don't think there's really a possible change to the neighborhood. There are a couple of properties with three-car garages already. Mine included is one of them, so it's, I already have one, so I don't need to make one any bigger. Alternatives? I think Mr. Santora and his neighbor, you know, put in effect, you know, the width between the two houses, which isn't really going to affect anything that way. It's not a substantial request. I don't think it'll have any physical or environmental conditions if granted. Is it self-created? Yes, but we've approved a lot of garages and more excess in bigger sizes than what Mr. Santora is asking for because everybody, you know, buys a toy once in a while and needs to have it someplace and park it. So I move that we approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we continue to all be present. The next item is the application with respect to 162 Tamarack Drive. This is a Type II action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we grant the application. It will actually improve the appearance of the neighborhood. Mr. Simmons already has done the hard job of taking down the questions to remove a hazard. I think adding the fence would add character to the neighborhood as well as protect the animals that he has and also the animals walking out. Sustainability of the requests, although there's none, the effects on the physical or environmental conditions, if granted, I think it'll add to the environmental conditions. And is the situation self-created? Yes, it is. I think that it would have benefited the neighborhood and itself.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present. Next item is the application relating to 547 Pine Grove Avenue. This is a Type II action for secret purposes. I would make a motion with respect to this application that we grant the variance and would incorporate by reference all of the findings that were made in the granting of the variance when it was before us in 2012, and would just ask that a copy of that resolution be attached. That, I believe, encompasses all the findings that would need to be made. Is there a second with respect to that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Next item is the application with respect to 127 Wimbledon Road. This is also a Type II action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application and grant the variance as applied for based on the following findings. The plan is the least substantial. It's a very minor eight tenths of a foot and 5.9 feet, so it's not a substantial request. It is a positive change in the neighborhood. The benefit of having a porch cannot be obtained by any other means. You have to make the house bigger to have a porch. The request will have no adverse environmental impact, and the difficulty is not self-created because they bought the house as it was in the '60s.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The entire board continues to be present. The last item on the agenda tonight is the application with respect to 130 Beacon View Court. This is also a Type II action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application with respect to this application, or a motion with respect to this?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That we approve this request with the following findings in mind. First of all, it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. At least if there's any change, it'll be positive. In fact, I think this application raises the bar a little bit for the whole neighborhood. So it's a very positive thing. There's no other alternative that would not require a variance because it's the setback of the house. It's not a substantial request as they can be sometimes, very reasonable. There will be no physical or environmental impact on the conditions of the neighborhood. And the situation is self-created, but to a point, because one of the purposes of the porch is to assist with handling this bad winter weather that we have, and that's not self-created. But this should help a great deal. So I move that we approve this request.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'd just like to add the idea of the porches on the front of the house, in my opinion, is, like you said earlier, a very nice addition to the neighborhoods.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The entire complement of board members remains present in the room at this time. The last item that we have on our agenda is, we were presented with the package with proposed minutes for the meeting on May 4th. There was one minor addition that was made to them to reflect the fact that Mr. Evans is a member of the board, even though originally he was designated as an alternate board member. As soon as he was designated in that capacity, Mr. Vignette resigned from the board, and he became a member of the board. So, other than that amendment, is there any other amendments that anyone would propose to the minutes? If not, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes with that amendment. Is there any discussion?
I'll second that.
You'll second that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We are all still present, but we are now adjourned.